Well, I'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Land Use Committee of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. We have one item on the agenda, and that is ordinance 20-15 to rezone a 19.73 acre parcel from employment to residential estate regarding 2300 West Tap Road, Duncan Campbell petitioner. So let's start with staff overview of this petition. I think we have Mr. Ryan Robling to present from the Planning and Transportation Department.
Yes, thank you. Share my screen here in just a second.
Hardly hear you.
Is this better?
Little bit.
Speak louder. Sorry, kind of limited in my microphone. Okay, hang on. Okay. Is that better? That's a basically yelling, but okay, sorry.
Good.
Sounds good.
And we can see your screen.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this petition is for the property located at 2300 West Tap Road. The property is currently zoned employment EM. The property is currently developed with a single-family dwelling. The comprehensive plan has designated the property as employment center. The surrounding uses include vacant parcels to the north, south, west, and Clear Creek Trail is to the east. The property to the south is a vacant quarry and is owned by the petitioner, and it is also outside of the city's jurisdictional bounds. So this petition is proposing to rezone the property from its current zoning of employment to residential estate. The EM district does not allow for the construction or expansion of single-family dwellings. The petitioner is therefore requesting to rezone this in order to expand the currently existing single-family structure. So just a little bit of a history of the site. The site includes a historic house constructed in the 1830s. The property is within the Borland House and First Quarry State Listed Historic District. The property was annexed by the City of Bloomington and zoned quarry. The property had been identified by its adjoining use to the south while the property was within the areas intended for annexation. This caused the property to be brought into the city and zoned as quarry. The newly adopted UDO and its conversion map changed the zoning from quarry to employment. Again, the comprehensive plan designates this portion of Tap Road as employment center. The intent of employment center designation was to provide locations for a variety of commercial employment and utility uses. The comprehensive plan uses a broad brush approach to land use mapping rather than parcel level analysis. This allows for some flexibility when evaluating parcel level considerations. So the couple of things the comprehensive plan gives goals and guidance. So the goal 2.2 sets a goal of preserving assets of historic and architectural significance. Policy 2.5.2.3 is historic neighborhood and districts preserve and enhance authentic design characteristics such as building form by encouraging new or remodeling of structures to be of historic compatibility in neighborhoods or adjacent areas. Historic preservation is a goal, the to enhance the sense of community and preserve stories of older cultures found in in the landmarks and landscapes we visit and protect the memories of people, places, and events honored in our local monuments and markers. The comprehensive plan proposes to ensure development decisions are balanced with the protection and conservation of both natural and historic resources. Comprehensive plan further this purpose with vision statement principle nine, which discusses the importance and desire to enhance our natural assets and protect historic resources. Vision statement principle 12 is focused on the virtues of historic preservation and rehabilitation of historic structures, helping to ensure their continued use. Goal 3.4 is sets a goal to increase areas of native plants within the city. These native plants help to improve soil, air, and water quality, soil, air, and water quality, and increase the ability for local wildlife to thrive within the city. Comprehensive plan also give guidance to allow residents to age in place, including the ability to meet basic needs and ensure self-sufficiency. Goal 1.2, health and safety seeks to support strategies that sustain and enhance health and safety of residents. Policy 4.4.5 encourages the special design to promote housing, which is built for a range of ages. Policy 5.3.2 specifically seeks to enable seniors to remain in their homes, allowing them to age in place. Here is a an overview of the site plan, the proposed site plan. You can see the existing structures. It's my mouse. Never remember how this works. So the existing primary structure, there's a detached garage, a shed, and a barn. And then you can also see the existing drive which runs along the western border and enters along tap there. Here is a slightly more zoomed in version, so you can see the addition to the southern portion of the site along with the proposed setbacks to about 25 feet from the rear setback and 215 feet from the side. Here is a drawing of the proposed addition showing the additional first floor living spaces and the restroom. This is the south elevation showing the proposed addition. So there are some issues, which is why I showed those items. There are some issues with the rezoning the site to RE. The RE district has a minimum rear setback of 60 feet. The current structure is already set at the 60 feet line from the rear property line. So the proposed addition would encroach 35 feet into the rear real building setback, so it would require a variance in order to be constructed if this petition were approved. Additionally, accessory structures are limited in the RE district to 55 or 50% of the cumulative footprint of the primary structure. So that puts the the current structures, accessory structures over the limit as they are roughly 1,000 square feet over what would be or over the what would be allowed, excuse me. So a variance would be required to legitimize these existing historic accessory structures. Alright, so the in conclusion here, the Plan Commission who voted 9-0 to send this petition to the council with favorable favorable recommendation and the department both promote the rezoning of this property, which is both unique historic and environmental characteristics. That should be preserved for the future. The Plan Commission also feels that the current EM zoning is not appropriate for a large residential property with a historic use on on it. The current zoning does not allow for an expansion of the current historic use. So again, while the comprehensive plan does identify the site as employment center, this is a result of existing zoning using existing zoning as guides and a desire to not make granular decisions about individual properties and instead to focus on broad strokes for large areas of the city. Parcel level changes were not part of the conversion map process, but the possibility for some that some would be needed to be addressed was anticipated with the upcoming zoning map process. So the department believes that aligning the zoning and the use will best protect the historic structure and the surrounding properties in it and the surrounding properties is in line with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The rezone to a single-family district will allow will also require future uses on surrounding properties to be set back further than they would otherwise additionally be required to further extending protections to the both the environmental and historic structure. There are a couple of things that the Plan Commission has to review in order to make a recommendation. The comprehensive plan. The recommendation of the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan designates the property again as employment center. But there there are goals and policies set in place to ensure things that to ensure development is limited but allowed historic and environmental development is allowed, Eric, allowed to continue and as well the agent or sorry, as well. The there is goals and policies set in place to allow residents to age in place. Current conditions and characters of structures used in the zoning district, the current zoning district does not allow for the currently existing structure to exist or expand. So the EM district does not allow for single-family uses. The RE district, however, would. The most desirable use for which the land in each zoning district is adapted. The property contains a historic single-family dwelling, which is unique and should be preserved. The historic nature of the property makes for a single-family use to be the most desirable use for this property as a loss would be detrimental to the character of the city. The property is heavily wooded and the RE district would help further protect environmentally sensitive assets within the city. The conservation of sensitive environmental features. Again, the property is heavily wooded. The RE district is specifically created to allow for the conservation of protected environmental assets and would limit the the large property to a single-family use with light agricultural uses that are associated. The conversion of the property values throughout the jurisdiction. The property is currently developed with a single-family dwelling and has caused no detrimental effects to surrounding property values. The properties to the north and west are currently vacant. The property to the east is home to the Clear Creek Trail, and the property to the south again is owned by the petitioner and is outside of the city's jurisdictional bounds. And then finally, responsible development and growth, the the property is currently developed with a single-family dwelling and has been for over 150 years. It is responsible to protect the historic property and preserving it from becoming another more intense use. This, there are vacant air lands set for more intense developments to the north and west of the property. These properties are far more suitable for non-single-family uses, whereas this property should maintain a single-family use. Is finally, the the when the Plan Commission reviewed case ZO 1620, the recommendation came with the two conditions. I just thought I would mention them here that again is that the proposed addition to structure will need a variance from rear yard setback or rebuilding setbacks and that the the accessory structures will need to be limited, size will need to be legitimized. Is all I have for you, and I can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robling. Appreciate the presentation. So I just wanted to follow up because you mentioned several times the part in the comprehensive plan that talks about aging in place. And so maybe I can have the petitioner explain how that is relevant to this petition and make any additional statement that the petitioner would like to make at this time.
Well, if you have your if you can see us in the video, you we can see that we're already aging in place. We
Would you give your names for the record, please?
Mine's Duncan Campbell and it's my wife Kathy. We've lived here since the 80s and restored the entire house and property. It was pretty much of a disaster when we acquired it and we've been able to manage to raise kids here and have our family life here, but now we have one bathroom, which is upstairs where the bedrooms are. The basement entry was outside. And so for our own convenience, especially as we get older, we we plan to enclose the basement entrance, put a second bathroom on the on the primary floor of the house, the first floor, and create another bedroom suite, if you will, to accommodate us if we get to wheelchair status or basically we've created an accessible addition. And so and it's created some modern space for us that will add to our comfort. I don't know if you've ever tried to heat a house that was built in the 1830s, but we pretty much live in sweatshirts and flannels all winter. And so we've put in radiant floor and we've done some other things to just make it more comfortable for us. And we, you know, we in terms of aging in place, we spent quite a bit of time thinking, okay, well, maybe it's time to let go of this and move to town and live in a condo or do whatever people are supposed to do, and we just couldn't part with the property. We've spent our lives here and we don't really want to want to stop doing that. So when I when I and I'm a preservationist by trade, so I designed this addition with an architect friend, Kathy and I did, and and started to consider all these things that might make it easier for us to stay here. And it wasn't until I went to get a building permit that I realized that I was zoned out of permission to live here. And I never complained about it because it was quarry for years. It was agriculture before that. And then, of course, it was here forever before there was any such thing as zoning. So but this is the consistent use. I mean, it's been a big farm. It's obviously you've read my petitioner's statement. We feel like we've done a really good job of stewarding it. We've spent our, you know, the second half of our lives, if you will, protecting it and getting it listed and participating with it in this in the culture of the city. And so we just, we don't want to let go of it. And this was the plan for us to be able to stay here.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Are there questions from committee members either for staff or for the petitioner? Council, Committee Member Volan.
Yes, hello, Mr. Campbell and Ms. Biagia. Good to see you. This seems very promising. You know, I don't think that the property had even contemplated being brought into the city limits of Bloomington, let alone subject to zoning law. But can you talk a little about the potential someday 50 years from now when none of us are around of the property to be for to I'll just use the D word, developed. Is there any reason to think that it could be developed? Is there any reason to think that it should be further developed than it already is? Or is it permanently historic? I like, I just don't know what to make of the the place.
Yeah. There are some some physical and legal restrictions on on building anything here because about a third of the property is floodplain. So there as you come in that long driveway to the east between us and Clear Creek Trail is an enormous wetland. And it right now it's dry, but most of the year it's it's soggy, so it can't it can't be developed because it's in a floodplain. And then the a significant portion of we own, we own an additional 30 acres behind us, which is all abandoned quarry. Okay, so that's that was developed as industry, as mining industry, and now that's been left on its own, and I think you'll see in my statement, I I use that, you know, we we use that to give tours for the city and visitors center and stuff like that, and I'm an advocate for the limestone industry. So it's we've we've basically put it on the state register of historic places in order to to that doesn't actively preserve it, that that basically calls attention to it and and makes people think, okay, well, maybe this is something I want to see or participate in.
Do you think that local designation for the entirety of it, I mean, I I don't know, I'm
Yeah, this has been a conundrum for me professionally. I'll I'll be totally upfront with you about it. I've served in both as a an advisory capacity and also as a voting member of the Bloomington Preservation Commission. I wrote it. I wrote the ordinance. I've been there almost since the beginning. I still think it's one of the very best state ordinances, city ordinances in the state. And and I've been, I'm not actively a voting member. I'm not really quite sure why the administration hasn't seen fit to appoint me, but it hasn't. But I am actually appointed by the council as an advisory member. And over the years, and I and I'm not, I don't think this is a bad thing, but over the years, I've seen volunteers and other membership members come and go. There was a time when we had a very well-established professional representation on that commission. And other, and I mean, people who were trained in in aspects of historic preservation and both in the law about it as well as in the sort of the more socially the social meaning and purpose of it. And more recently, that has not been the case. We have several very, very qualified members from other walks of life, but when I look to stewarding my own property, I look to trust myself and my own professional training and my own judgment about how to best take care of it. And I have not been convinced recently that I want to put it in the hands of the City of Bloomington until they take such time as they create commissions that are professionally capable of doing it.
So I'm Maybe I should rephrase.
I'm actually afraid to designate it locally because I can't because I've seen the local commission damage historic property.
Okay, so I guess maybe I should to 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 find to make a fine point on this. In other words, you're not concerned about it. Well, I can't quite tell what your concern is, whether you're concerned about them messing up the existing property as it is, or whether you're concerned about them densifying the property.
Either.
Okay.
Either, but
Well, that's a
But I mean, I could give you some specific examples, which I, you know, I I we fully intend to preserve this property through covenant or through easements or through a legal agreement with Indiana landmarks or somebody else. So we're not going to die away and just let this go to whoever, whatever real estate developer wants to get his hands on it. I so but I don't, I haven't so far been convinced that the best strategy is to put it in the hands of the City of Bloomington. As much as I love the city and have served it myself, I just, you know, I just don't think that's, I just don't think that's the best strategy.
I imagine that's a difficult thing to admit. I'm sorry you have to say that.
You know, I mean, I I want you to hear it in a way because I think I might be able to convince you that it's true, but on the other hand, for my own purposes and to and to protect the property itself, stewardship of historic property isn't about ownership. It's about long-term preservation. It isn't the person who lives there isn't the important person, you know, the culture that holds on to it and respects it and understands it and takes meaning from it. That's that's what's important about it. So the trick in preservation is to put that in the best hands that you can to make sure that that happens. And there are lots of different ways to do it, one of which is through easements and and other legally binding methods that can't be violated by anybody who comes along as the next owner. And we're, you know, at this age, looking at how we best want to do that, and we will do it.
So I may have more questions, but
Isabel, can I jump in?
I was just gonna say, thanks for the thanks for your stewardship and very interesting, and I have some more questions. I think I'll hold on to them.
Ms. Scanlon, do you have something to say to this?
Sure, I just wanted to add to that, that Duncan makes a good point about the floodplain on most of the property. So part of the reason that we chose that the RE zoning district as opposed to others is that those environmental restrictions would make it difficult to develop in the future. It it could be possible to do some sort of subdivisions here of a smaller or slightly slightly a larger scale, but it's unlikely with one with the intent of having the home be preserved and the surrounding lands, and then two, just with the floodplain that does exist and with the shape of the property is just kind of an odd an odd little piece down there. And as Duncan mentioned, you know, if they choose to do deed restriction to protect the house, we felt that the zoning, the RE zoning also makes sense for what is there now. So it could allow something in the future, but it does match what's there and what has been there historically. So that's kind of how we came to that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Are there other questions from council members? Councilmember Flaherty, did you have a question?
Yes, a couple, maybe. I feel like I we waded into preservation waters that are that are deeper than my understanding. But I was wondering if staff could comment on the memo which which mentioned that would help ensure the long-term preservation of the of the historic structure, but it is designated by the state in some capacity. What what state designation? What does that designation do to already protect the property? You know, absent the zoning. Let's say this is zoned mixed use or R4 or something instead, for instance. What what type of protections would this structure have based on that?
The state, the state designation is honorary. Okay, it doesn't, it, you know, this this local city designation is is puts legal restrictions on what you can do and creates certificates of appropriateness and the commission would have control over what alterations were made to the exterior of the building and so on. This the state designation is usually given at the time of a national register recognition. And it's a way for the state to sort of align itself with the National Park Service recognition standards. And so when I first bought the property, I was I was involved professionally with the state office, the Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology, which is the state Historic Preservation Office. And one of the staff persons there said, well, you know, to put it on the state register, if you can't get around to putting it on the national register at this time, we can put it on the state register with a letter. And so I wrote up a legal description of the property and I did some historic research and I gave it to the state and they designated it. But it doesn't do anything other than pat you on the back, basically.
Got it. So so to the to the question at hand for for staff to I appreciate that, Mr. Campbell. The 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 answer basically is is the state historic designation won't do anything. And and this zoning, the residential estate zoning would help to preserve the property's current uses. That that's right?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
I have a second. I can wait for second round or just go ahead if the chair wishes, whatever.
Go ahead, Councilmember Flaherty.
So it was also mentioned in your presentation, Mr. Robling, and in the packet that the kind of broad strokes of the conversion mapping process led to this being zoned employment. Is this something you would have anticipated encountering and and correcting or addressing in the next year as we go through the zoning mapping process with the UDO? Is this the type of granularity that 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 staff anticipates getting into? In other words, if if petitioner was coming to us a year or two later, could is it likely this already would have been rezoned to residential estate?
So it's hard to say exactly, but there is a good chance that property such as this, due to its size and nature, would have been caught in a rezoning process in entire map. But there again, the granularity, it does cause issues at, you know, pinpointing exact spots like this. But again, a large property like this could potentially be found.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Scanlon, I see you have reappeared. Did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I was going to say that in our preliminary look at the map and what it and just things were issues have been raised, we have been flagging areas where it feels like the comprehensive plan maybe was too broad and little spots have come out. So even if they had not come forward, it's very likely that we would have identified this because it's a known property. We know it came in in the AFA with the other acreage as part of a quarry that it never, you know, really was. It was, you know, obviously associated, but not quarry land. So I do think this one, we could say with confidence, would probably have been identified.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions from council members? I have a question and it's, it's sort of similar to Councilmember Flaherty's question. And that is why the staff feels that RE is the most appropriate residential zoning rather than a more dense residential zoning district. And this is mainly because as we, as we know, we, we need to allow more people to, to live in the city. It's a more sustainable way of developing to have denser population in the city. And the RE zone really seems more rural to me. But if you could describe why you settled on RE as the most appropriate, I would appreciate that.
Sure, of course. So there's a couple of things at play here. The big one, as Mr. Campbell addressed, is the floodplain exists and it covers a good chunk of that, which would make development hard. But then there's also other issues such as new, single-family or residential, excuse me, residential properties need to front to a public right-of-way. The prop, current property has about 190 feet of right-of-way along tap. So into, subdivided into smaller residential districts, you would either need to be required to build a public right-of-way that can access through tap or, you know, would only create roughly two more lots, two or three more lots, depending on the zoning district you chose. So the, those, those are the reasons why we didn't look at more dense. But then also RE has protections in place for the environmental, the heavily wooded lot was something we wanted to make sure that we protected. And subdividing it further would require, you know, roads and structures to be built, further reducing that, that area.
How much of the property is wooded?
I have, it's greater than 60%. I don't know if I have the exact number on the top of my notes, but it is quite a bit of the, the lot is, is wooded. Now, Mr. Campbell might be able to go in for-
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably close. That, Eric, there are some old farm fields that we keep mowed that are in the wetland, in the lowland, so they can't, they couldn't be developed. But we've kept the woods from encroaching there. But most of the rest of it, including a lot of the quarry space, has grown back in over the time we've been here.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions for staff or the petitioner about this proposal? Okay, well, seeing none, we will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the petition to rezone 2300 West Tap Road from commercial or for, from employment center to residential estate? You can either use the raise hand function within Zoom or type into the chat directed to council meeting host. And Mr. Lucas will assist us in seeing if anybody would like to speak. I don't see any raised hands. Mr. Lucas, anything in chat?
I see no takers.
Okay, we'll give it one more minute. This is a public comment on the petition to rezone 2300 West Tap Road. All right, well, seeing none, we'll come back to committee members for any final comments or a do-pass recommendation or a motion to, to have another hearing, either way. Any committee members want to make a comment? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Campbell and, and Ms., I'm sorry, I forget your last name. So close. Sorry, didn't say it. Thank, thank you both and thank you to staff for, for such a detailed packet and memo. I thought that was really helpful and, and for your answers tonight. I'm, I'm supportive of, of this petition to rezone. And in particular, I think it's an interesting sort of demonstration of an appropriateness of residential estate, which I think got sort of a misunderstood, bad rap during the UDO discussions. It was sort of made out to be a boogeyman of, of zoning as this is like massive, you know, McMansion estates or something. And it's actually quite the opposite. It's about preserve, like, if you look at the conversion map, it's a farm and largely wooded lots in a few areas that are directly adjacent in most cases to other public amenities like Griffey Woods or, in this case, the Clear Creek Trail. So I think as a preservation, as an environmental preservation tool, it, it makes sense in narrow and targeted ways. And I think for all the reasons described in, in tonight's presentation and the memo, it makes sense in this case. So I'll be voting in favor and I'd be happy to, to do that tonight and send it back to the council for second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee members wish to make a comment or a recommendation? I'll just say I also support this rezone. I think this is one of the rare cases where residential estate is appropriate to, both because of the shape of the property as being so long and narrow, having environmental constrictions and trying to preserve the tree cover. These are all good reasons to use the RE zoning. Any, do I hear any other committee members' feedback or a recommendation? Yes, Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, I mean, in a way, this is still technically, I guess you call it an upzoning, like it's going from, from zero residential to one, you know? So it's slightly, getting slightly more urban, you know? And, but of course, not every part of the urban place needs to be gridded streets and multi-story buildings. So, you know, I, I did have hope that maybe, you know, one other house could be built there or something, just, you know, we, anything for the cause of more housing. But having said that, you know, we also talked a lot about, you know, in other contexts about climate change and it's important to preserve the lungs of the city, which this property does. So, or at least is trying to do, and the properties are trying to do it. So amen to that. And, you know, I see certainly no harm here and plenty of benefit. So, thanks. Thanks for bringing it.
All right.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, this is, and this is to address partly what Steve is saying, saying, and I, and I think you all probably know this, but when this property, this property was divided out from, at one time it was close to 2,000 acres of agricultural land. And they were, the people who owned it and operated it were front coat pioneers, if you will. They were developers in their own right. They helped build the university. They became important citizens and they, in the, in the process, they sequestered quite a bit of land and supported themselves by farming. And over the next, you know, couple of centuries, it got, it's been divided out. When we bought it, all that was offered for sale was the house and some surrounding property. And because everything else was going to, to development. I mean, their whole intention was to liquidate the property for, you know, as much as, as much money as they could. And they knew that the frontage along Tap Road was valuable and, or if it wasn't then, would be. And it, that evolved into the development of the Surgery Center and some other things that we now have on Tap Road. When Kathy and I moved here, you could drive all the way across Tap Road and we were the only residents. I mean, imagine. So, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, development can be good. But this ended up being, this piece ended up being a remnant, if you will. The owner just happened to want to preserve the house. And so they cut out the piece that we own and said, we're going to sell this separately to somebody who will do what essentially we've done. And with full knowledge, everything around you is going to go the way of the world. And so we chose to do this because we understood it as a remnant. And it was only subsequently that we ended up buying the quarries when they couldn't sell them to anybody else. And so, and that's the odd, the odd thing is that I'm about to encroach on my own property, which is, you know, I have one, one lot in the city. I objected to being annexed in the first place because it just didn't make any sense to me. I don't even have any city services. So, you know, but I, I lost that, that fight. But, and I, it's fine, I don't want to argue that all over again. But I just, I think there are places like this, when people come here, they see it and they go, oh my gosh, look what we have right here in the city limits. And so, you know, we've really fought to preserve that, notwithstanding the need for affordable housing and all kinds of other development that we, you know, in our time, support. But, but this is, this really is an odd piece and a remnant and we, we feel lucky to have it and we've been, we've been happy to take care of it. So I, you know, I appreciate your support and, and hopefully the council will see the same, will do the same thing.
Thank you. And I do want to thank you both for preserving the historic structure on this property. I think it does have a lot of value for remembering the history of Bloomington and-
Yeah, it's an important place.
Yeah. So, okay, do we have a recommendation? Mr. Volan, do you want to go into further tangents?
I'll make the recommendation, but I'd just say it's rare that we have a petitioner who also would be the foremost expert on the topic that we're discussing. So I'm happy to allow the, the debate. But, you know, I think also we've learned something about the, the area and certainly I'm no fan of sprawl development that happened around it. So, you know, the kind of work that, that they're doing here is to be emulated, you know, all the more reason to support it. And with that, I'll move recommendation to pass.
Just a point of order, I thought I saw committee member Rosenbarger's hand earlier. I just wanted to check in.
Oh, yes.
Couldn't tell.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, you want to chime in?
Thanks, I was just going to chime in. It's nothing really of substance, honestly. I was just going to say, I appreciate such a thorough and detailed letter from you all with all the supporting evidence. It was really great reading through everything and having that context there. So thanks very much. I support this, you know, staff recommendation was lovely.
Okay. All right, well, let's go down the line then with this do-pass recommendation. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
And I also vote yes?
Point of order.
Recommendation? Yes, Councilmember Volan.
So this is because of our vote tonight, this is going to come back next week at the regular session of the 16th?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. That's going to be a fun night, so we need to schedule, schedule this one first.
Yes, I would advise.
See what we can do about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Council president, see what you can do about that.
I'll talk to people.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you very much to staff and the petitioner and everybody for your time.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Thanks.